Passing along.
Hello.
How was your walk this morning? I'd like to call the August 25th, 2015 Springbrough Board of Education meeting in order. Perry, would you please call the roll?
Regano. Petroni. Malone.
Here.
Anderson. Stuckey.
Here.
Okay, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, item 1.2, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All the favors say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Okay, then moving on to 1.3, approval of the August 11th, 2015 meeting minutes.
If I could, I'd like to, before the board considers a motion, I'd like to read something from Robert's Rules of Order to clarify how the meeting minutes are being presented for August 11th. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
On page 120 of the newest edition of Robert's Rules of Order, there's a frequently asked question and answer section. And under that, question 15 on page 120 says, "Isn't it necessary to summarize matters discussed at a meeting in the minutes of that meeting in order for the meeting minutes to be complete?" The answer, "Not only is it not necessary to summarize matters discussed at a meeting in the minutes of that meeting, it is improper to do so. Minutes are a record of what was done at a meeting, not a record of what was said." And it also cites exactly where to find that within the Robert's Rules of Order. So when I presented the meeting minutes to you for your approval, they do not have a word-for-word section from anybody because it's only on what was done at the meeting, which is what is voted on, the actions taken. And that's what I have in the meeting minutes, and that's why we do the board meeting videos, so that they can see the back and forth in all the discussions. So when you guys go to vote on the meeting minutes for the 11th, that is how I have presented the meeting minutes.
So if I could interpret what you're saying, that the minutes are supposed to repress what they're not. They're not to be a narrative. Would that be fair?
Yes.
But to be a factual, concrete account of the decisions that are made?
Yes, of the actions taken, which are the action items that you vote on.
Okay. With that said, is there a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Yes. Ms. Floyd is bringing that up because at the last meeting, I had read a statement about the American Government textbook and asked to have that statement. At the time, I asked to have that statement included in the minutes. And, you know, in every public body, I've watched on TV, C-SPAN, wherever, that's just a common courtesy that's extended to people who provide those comments. And what Ms. Floyd didn't read is the rest of Robert's Rules of Order, Article 10, Section 60, which says, "When the minutes are to be published." In addition to a strict record of what is done, as heretofore described, they should also contain a list of the speakers on each side of every question with an abstract of all addresses, and if not, the addresses in full when written copies are furnished. And of course, I provided you a written copy on a couple of different occasions. So clearly, the board has the latitude, and you, Ms. Floyd, have the latitude to include those, if you chose to do that. And I would point out, too, that you did not keep just the strict record. Because there, included in the minutes as they're presented, is an attachment that includes a rebuttal to my comments from the previous meeting. And so, you know, you included staff's rebuttal of my comments, but I don't understand why we refused to include my comments, which, you know, were relatively brief. And so, I think it's just a common courtesy to include those and avoid this discussion. And, you know, it's kind of a futile thing, anyway, because we are required by law to keep an accurate record of the proceedings. And there's nothing that would prevent somebody, and I'll do it if I have to. But there's nothing that prevents somebody from making a motion to include those comments, and in the text of that motion, to include the verbatim language. And so, it's just an unnecessary step, and there's really no legal way to prevent that from happening. And so, you know, if I have to, I'll make the motion to amend the minutes with my statement, and I'll read the verbatim text of my statement.
Would you like to amend the minutes?
Yes, I would. And I'll make a motion to amend the minutes for the 11th of August board meeting. I move to amend item 15-202 in the minutes to include the following statement.
Okay, is there a second?
The lessons in, I'm not finished with the motion. The lessons in this book-
We did not need to read the statement.
Well, yes, we do, because I'm not finished with the motion, Dr.
Why order? We do not need to read the amendments.
The point of order is that I have the floor, and I get to make a motion.
But you can't include the whole statement as a motion.
Well, of course I can.
Okay, all right, please, please.
Of course I can.
Okay, now, we're not going to pass, I'm sorry.
You wouldn't know what the amendment would be if I didn't read the whole thing.
This is not going to turn it into a three-rim circus.
Well, you're turning it into one because I have the right to make a motion.
We have a motion.
Now, you're violating the board's-
Do I have to wheel you out of order?
You can try, but you're the one who's out of order because the point of order is, you asked for a motion. I'm in the process of making a motion.
There is no second to that motion.
I haven't made the motion yet, Dr. Malone. You cut me off in the middle of the motion.
You're out of order. I asked you, please be quiet.
Let's proceed, Dr. Malone, and I'll cover this later in the meeting.
Okay, so the amendment dies due to a lack of a second.
No, the motion dies because it was failed, because you did not let me deliver the motion.
The motion?
I'd just like to know what you're afraid of about including this statement in the minutes. That's what I want to know. What are you trying to keep from the public?
Okay, well, can I just call that?
Please, no, no. We have a motion on the floor.
No, we don't. I didn't get to finish the motion.
We had an amendment. We did have a motion. Mr. Stuckey made it. I second it.
That motion we have.
It is on the floor.
That motion we have, I'll grant you that.
Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Regano.
No.
Malone.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
The motion to adopt the minutes as presented is approved. Moving on to public participation. Is there anyone here from the Springbrough Education Association? Okay. Is there anyone here from the Springbrough Classified Employees Association? Okay. Public participation rearranged. There was no one who requested to speak. Then, major report, item number three.
Yes, I bring for your approval a $100 gift card from Kroger for the high school cross-country team.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call.
One second, we're going to give this to someone. Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes. 3.2.
Approval for donation of electrical work for Borough Fest by Saturn Electric valued at $4,082.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Is this the last-minute help that we received?
Correct. Yes. Yes, it is.
Wow.
Great.
Okay.
That's super nice.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
They do a lot of business for us.
Call the roll, please.
Sure, Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Approval, 3.2, a donation to accept from the Athletic Boosters, uniforms, $5,076. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Approval?
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Anderson? Stuckey?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes 3-0. Item 3.4, approval of a donation of $1,000 from the We Panthers Football Program to the Boys and Girls Soccer Program. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Item 3.5, approval of July 15 financial statements. Is there a motion to get on the floor?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Discussion?
Yes, I will actually start, but if you guys have any questions. For July financials, we came in right on target. Actually, we're going to be a little bit low versus last year this time. But the payroll, we had three payrolls in July versus last year. The three payrolls were in August. In January this year, they're in July and December. So you'll obviously see that our payroll is high because we did have the extra pay. Other than that, we're actually a little bit lower than we were this time last year once you move the payroll out of there. So we're right on schedule. Everything is looking really good. And the financials are out here. If anyone has any questions, they can call me or email me.
Now, is the 15, 16 year the last year for the 26 pay?
Yes. Starting next school year, we will be doing 24 equal pays. So it'll be a lot easier. You won't see that extra pay that comes twice a year for the 26 pays. And that'll begin next school year.
Okay, there's no questions or discussion, then roll call?
Yeah, well, I do have questions. On the, which report is it? On the budget actual. The bottom-line cash balance that you're showing in the five-year is $6.4 million. And I thought that the last five-year that we had approved was, had a cash balance of like 8.3.
That was for 15. 16, I believe it is still eight, let me look and see. 15, 16, or the 15 year was 8,273. But for 16, which is the school year we're in now, is 6,416. That was on the May forecast, that was approved in May. Now, in June, I did present the board an update in June, but it did not go to ODE, so I have to still use the last one that we actually revised and approved through ODE. And I didn't just bring it as an example. So that would be the May 15 forecast.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes, P.O. Superintendent's report?
Yes, this is for the approval of the Easterling contract. At the last meeting, we talked about perhaps the senior banners being done by an outside person. If you refer to, I think it's page 5, really, it's the third page, letter H, it said senior banners may be done by an outside vendor based on parent's choice. If an outside vendor has chosen to top the photographer, will need to schedule a separate date from the official Easterling-Springbrough High School picture date. Easterling Studios may provide this service if requested. So they were happy to oblige. So that it was the change to the contract.
That's for all sports, right?
Yes.
All sports? Okay. So is there then a motion to go ahead and approve the Easterling contract now, submitting with the modification here regarding the banners?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call, please.
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 4.2, approval to demolish the Jonathan Wright Building.
Totally. You actually, you must have a different eye on the guy.
Okay.
We didn't update George. We actually moved that to work session.
Okay.
There you go. This is my diving homie, I'll be good. He should have, you know. I have an extra.
Okay. Wait, Todd, you can take your time.
All right.
Okay, so are there any other items in your report, Kenton?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so moving on then to human resources. 5.1.
For the superintendent, I bring forth the approval of personnel items as presented.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call?
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
The motion passes 3-0. Curriculum Specialists Report. Approval of the Apex Learning Contract for Credit Recovery.
Yes, I respectfully request the approval of the Apex Learning Contract for Credit Recovery for our missile teams.
And this is what we were given information on at the work session at the last meeting. Is there a, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second. Approval?
Regano?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Stuckey?
Yes.
The motion passes 3-0. Are there any other items this time before we convene into the work session?
Not at this time.
Okay, we will then go on into our work session. 7.1, committee reports.
We have no committee reports at this time. The committees, I think, start next week.
Next week?
Yes.
What, do we know what meetings are set for next week? I'm sorry?
I don't know right off the top of my head. My calendar.
You can email us the reminders. Finances is-
September 9th right now.
It is, we may push that back so that we have one meeting with the final document, and then we bring it to the board. We're going to do a full presentation so that we can really understand the budget very well and give all of you a chance to see all, the inside out of the budget.
Okay, very good. Okay, 7.2, athletic Hall of Fame bylaws. Matt Lewis.
Good evening. Basically, what we've presented to you, this is one of the last things athletically, as far as the committee, that we like to put out in front and just get clarity on and present to you. But basically, what, with the- I thought I talked loud enough, but it would be a- But basically, what we've got here are bylaws, which we govern ourselves by with the Hall of Fame, the process, those type of things. With this, the framework would be that with work session discussion tonight, voting at the next meeting, we would move forward. We would meet as a committee upon your approval of these in early October to basically bring the committee in, cover these bylaws once again as a group so we're all on the same page. And then, moving forward, we would go publicly, collect the names and those type of things for nominations, which anyone can submit. And then, we would vote as a committee to move forward with our next class. The Hall of Fame itself is the last Friday boys' basketball game of the year, which I believe is January 22nd. We have all the dates in place, provided that we move forward in a timely manner as far as this goes. But these basically are our governing principles. The Hall of Fame itself has been a structured entity since 1980, 35 years roughly. We have a number of wonderful people that have been in there. And with this, we're just trying to provide a structure publicly that everyone can see how the process works and provide everyone a framework for how we kind of govern and guide ourselves. So if anybody has any questions, I'm welcome to answer those. Basically.
There's a limit of four, is that what you're going to try to do each time? Is that what that meant?
What we found, I think, my first year here, was the class that we had was a little bit large. Our goal has been to shorten the evening a little bit, I guess, and to make it a little bit smaller per year. Roughly four to five is kind of the ballpark we're looking for.
I have one question. I had a person mention to me today. It's 2B, it talks about to be eligible, an athlete must have excelled at the high school level.
Sure.
The excel, is that referencing academics or athletics?
Excelled is kind of a broad-
So it's more athletics?
It's kind of a broad word, but obviously, being the Athletic Hall of Fame, but I think if you look at our mission as far as what our athletes and what it is we're developing as complete student athletes now, our mission, number one, is intellectual development. And I think that that is part of what we're talking about. And the hope is, with our kids, five years from now, being complete student athletes, we'll have a resume that kind of fits into what we expect as far as our Hall of Fame criteria, so.
I appreciate that's in your mission. That's great, because it does send quite the message and raise the expectation for all of our athletes. Thank you.
I just have a comment. I think that the bylaws have done a good job on, in there, you have a section where you kind of describe the composition of the selection committee. I just want to point out that policy requires the board to approve the specific members of the committee. And so, even though you've kind of outlined who those, what those positions are, I think the names would still need to come to the board for final approval.
We've talked about that, Matt, if you were, but.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Thanks, man.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to item 7.3, the discussion on the Jonathan Wright Building. Mr. Petrie?
Yes. Basically, over the weekend, in talking with Mr. Anderson, and I know he's spoken with many of you, he wanted to leave it open another month to get as much feedback from the community as he can. In case you don't know, I've done several phone, or not phone interviews, but television interviews, been on all the Cincinnati station, all the Dayton stations, almost three times. And over the past six weeks, Ms. DeRosa and I have had open a, ask the superintendent questions. So we've had that open, and we've received probably 30 questions, not always about Jonathan Wright, but quite a few. But I can tell you, the one comment I've not had is to keep it. Most everyone is clear that destroying the property at this time, that the building itself is what we're looking at. And then, the idea of putting a committee together and looking at future purposes of that land is a good one. So we haven't got, we really haven't got many questions about it. So we will probably bring that back, and I'm going to talk later. We don't have a lot to have on the agenda for September, maybe it's the 9th.
Eight, eight.
We may not have that meeting, so we'll bring it back, definitely, what we do have the next board meeting for a vote. But if you have questions, I'd be happy to entertain those. John and I'd be happy to find any information out that you may need to make a decision. Or you can call if you'd rather talk about it that way. Just let us know.
You know, it seems like, and again, this is information, comments that kind of come my way, kind of two points, I guess. One, there doesn't seem to be the attachment to that particular building, that physical building, that there was to the previous building there.
Right.
Which really was, quote, "old historic Springbrough." That building, I think, had historic, a lot of historic implications. But I think what people see is a building, a school building that is past its prime, isn't really, you can't really rehab it to turn it into a feasible school. And so, I think that's perhaps why there hasn't been a lot of comments on that, to bring it back to the school building. I think a lot of people, too, look, also would probably wonder, if you bring it back as a school building, who goes there? Which grade? Are we going to disrupt our patterns we have in place again? So it brings, would bring uncertainty. The other piece, I think, is that people are attached to, rightfully so, to the fact that the land is where the heritage is. It was Jonathan Wright land before it was Jonathan Wright school. And if we deal wisely with the land, I think that would, it's what many people in the community are looking for. So that's kind of what I have seen and heard.
By man, if you strike a couple quarters there, I'd like to comment on. The land itself, we're not building some big expensive park. We're going to put grass there, and that's it. Other than some landscaping around the bend and a few benches. So we're probably looking at $500 a year to maintain that. So we're not putting fields in and playground equipment and all of those things. It's going to be six acres of grass. That's one thing. Second, I have had some comments that are now, are we now looking to tear down all of our old buildings, referencing at Springbrough Intermediate? Absolutely not. There is absolutely nothing in any plan to tear down Springbrough Intermediate. I certainly wouldn't bring that because there is a huge historical perspective to Springbrough Intermediate. We actually have done a lot to that building. Mr. Pennell has, he knows a lot about the renovation of older buildings and doing it right so that it can handle moisture and things of that nature. Because that HVAC system isn't quite what they are at the other buildings. So there's absolutely no other plans for any of our other buildings. We need them all. This is just about the Jonathan Wright property at this time.
I've had numerous comments, and they pretty much echo what Dr. Malone and you have said, that doesn't seem to be a whole lot of people against the demolition, and as long as we can contain or continue to manage. Had two people today that are old timers, I mean, real old timers, come up to me, and I, when they started out about Jonathan Wright, I, you know, I wanted to run away. But after I explained to them what was going on, they fully understood that we were going to try to keep the name and move from there. And they were surprisingly quite okay with it, so.
Any other comments?
Couple of questions. When we last talked about this, we had kind of commissioned Mr. Anderson, Mr. Petroni to go talk to the church folks and see if some lease arrangement could have been worked out. I understand you were at that meeting, Mr. Petrie. Can you summarize that for us?
I should have started with that, you're right. We did meet Mr. Anderson, Mr. Petroni, two gentlemen from the church, Mr. Pennell and I, and also Mrs. Floyd were present. There were different things discussed. When it comes right down to it, the church is looking for a permanent home. That facility's too large, and they do not want to invest $130,000 in the roof, and then also take on, for example, the HVAC system if it were to go down. So they decided not to even make a request. And I think they've worked hard to save the money into their building budget, that they save their congregation, and they'd rather invest that into a new piece of property that will be their direction.
So what was, what was our offer to them, and what was their offer to us? So what was, what was our offer to them and what was their offer to us?
There was no offer, there were two different things. Mr. Petroni talked about a lease that would be structured, for example, if they, we did a five-year lease with them, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pennell or Miss Floyd, a five-year lease. For example, if it's a hundred thirty thousand dollars to fix the roof, they would pay that hundred thirty thousand dollars back over the five years. And then they would pay all the monthly utilities and pay us a couple thousand dollars a month leased. And anything that went wrong with that building, they would be responsible for. The church wasn't interested in that for the simple fact, the financial constraint that was there, they didn't know if they could meet that obligation. For me personally, I understand as a business deal, that would be a great thing, but there would be a lot of information we would need from that church to make something like that take place. Their financials, I mean, if we're going to invest anywhere from a hundred thirty to two hundred thousand dollars of district money into something, we would need to make sure it's a solid deal. So that wasn't something they were interested in. Mr. Anderson?
How long have they been leasing for us now?
Five years.
At seventy-two thousand dollars a year. We do have a track record.
Right. But we do have a track record, but as far as the profit made off of that building with the money we've put into it, we certainly are not making any money off that building at all. So if anything, we're going to lose on that building this year. If we were to fix that roof, we'll lose fifty thousand dollars basically of taxpayer money. So I mean, it's time to make a decision about that and it's a tough one for you all to make. Mr. Anderson talked about if they're willing to take on the monthly utilities and pay to fix everything that's wrong with the building, he was fine. Wouldn't do anything. And quite frankly, it was just a lease upfront, it was actually much more flexible and less structured that would benefit them. His point was, we just don't want to take on the liability of having to repair an old building when our kids aren't using it. So both offers were fair.
What was their offer back to us?
Nothing they do not want to offer. They do not want to offer. Did it occur to that, Mr. Pennell? And I like to thank John because John did most of the communication with him as well and it worked out nicely. But I hope the best to them, they've been great tenants and we definitely work with them to make sure everything's taken care of between here and now. As far as the food pantry, I'm not positive right now what's going to happen with the food pantry. I know Ms. Ford is talking with all of the churches in Springbrough to see if any of them are interested. And I know in the newspaper it said my recommendation to you is to remove a church and shut down the food pantry, but at the end of the day, I mean, we have to be responsible with taxpayer money. And I think the food pantry realizes that. Most food pantries in other districts, the city's usually involved and a church is involved, but typically not school districts. So since we had that particular piece of property, it worked out well. But moving forward, I mean, we might be able to look at something temporary. I've mentioned that at central office, it would be tough, but they need to look for a permanent home and that's for certain. And we'll definitely support them through communication to our families in any way that we can, but not necessarily financially, unless of course the fourth.
Just one last question. In your proposal to demolish the building, two hundred fifty thousand dollars to demolish it, does that include removing the building foundations?
Everything.
So including the subsurface excavation to move on?
Everything. And restoring it to grass, where it's flat, fleet, piece of land excavation afterwards. That's all I have.
Any other comments? The gentleman? Okay, moving on then to item seven point four, discussion of other items as required.
Well, the only thing I have is, just to let you, I know all of you are busy, we may not need the next board meeting. I mean, we only have one topic before we bring everyone together and pay you guys the big bucks you get to be school board members. A hundred fifty dollars each, which for what you guys do certainly is not a large sum of money. I think it'd be better just to wait until the end of the month. Because we're getting to where we're really caught up on our plans and there's just not a lot for you to vote on. So if it's okay with you, I'll let you know for sure by the end of next week. But I probably would plan on not having a board meeting on September.
That would make the twenty-second next week?
Okay. Is there any, item seven point five, public participation on a work session agenda item? Is there anything from the public? Yes.
I have a question about the food pantry. In talking with the city, is there any openness to the city coming along and supporting if we can get a church to also work with them?
I think our city is real supportive of things like this. I think they would just really need to have something more formal to deal with. But I mean, they too are dealing with taxpayer money as well, so they're hesitant, but at the same time, very open minded because they have a little more leeway than we do taking something like that on. So a lot of times the churches have these things up.
Sure any other comment? Yes, Stephanie?
Stephanie Benham, thirty-five, Frank Cor. Franklin, I volunteer at the Franklin Food Pantry. And I don't know if you're aware, but Franklin Food Pantry is supposed to serve at Springbrough, Franklin and Carlisle. Kind of like the Franklin-Springbrough Library. So I don't know if that has anything to do with it, but when people come in, we ask, are you a resident of Franklin or are you a resident of Springbrough or Carlisle? And those are the people that we surface and support.
I've asked that because I wondered the same thing. I haven't gotten a real direct response back about that.
So are we saying that there is a possibility, or at least we should explore some kind of consolidation of services here?
But I mean Franklin, it's, where is the food pantry at Franklin? Is it in downtown Franklin?
It's the old post office. It's down really close where you get your driver's license, like, but right behind Pisannellas.
So it's probably five minutes from Jonathan Wright, ten at the most. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Just.
I would just add, there's different thresholds for service through those two food pantries. They're treated a little bit differently in terms of qualifying for assistance. And that is where some of the distinction has been made between the two. I can get you more information on that if we need it at this, you know, at schools. But the reason you have to is there was a need within the community because of qualifications for service.
Yeah, that clarification would be helpful.
Ms. Greenberg, was yours the same comment? Did you get the same comment? Lynn? Did you get the same comment?
No, I was just pointing to her.
Oh, okay. Well, you did a good job.
Lots of comments usually didn't document myself.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the public on work session items? The board member comments, questions, reports. Mr. Stuckey?
First a question, any update on the Borough Fest?
Not, well, no, not enough to really give you a, because I think they're still, they're working through a few issues. But I think the last I heard, their total profit was about twenty-seven thousand maybe. But what we haven't looked at yet is, maybe they did, I don't know, how much are they paid to participate actually costs? So I'm not sure. Matt, would you?
I have a large file of those. Generally, we reimburse those roughly around November first. Right now, we're still in the process of bringing in all our fees. We had a little hiccup with the system transitioning to the collection of fees mid-August. So we extended it basically until this Friday for the collection. But we've brought in a lot of them after we get all their participation fees in and then we reimburse them before November is. We've spoke about doing it in the past, it was only reimbursed once a year, but we've tried to do it now three times a year to get them their fees back earlier if they're a fall athlete. But anybody that would have worked for, say, a winter sport, they still wouldn't be, would hold on to their paperwork, but they won't be reimbursed until after we know if they make that winter team or spring season following. But we've collected a good amount, we had a great turnout, support from the kids and I think it'll be ballpark, if not a little bit more than what we've typically had the previous years. But we've got a good amount collected thus far. If anybody has any kids out there that do need to turn it in, they can send it our way to the athletic office and we'll make sure we hold on to it.
And I think we need to keep in mind too, that it was the first year of something this large, and these parents, they worked hard. So the first time doing anything, you learn and grow from there. So I think it was a success regardless of how it probably could walk away with.
The pay play will come out of the proceeds from the Borough Fest, is that right, reimbursing us or?
Not necessarily. It'll come from the district.
That's what I.
It'll come from the district. But I'm sure that'll offset some of the things they didn't purchase from the district. So the property wash was also a factor.
Then the only other thing I had is talking to people about this week, teachers and students that I've seen, seem to think that everything went well for the first week and that's great. And our fall sports are off to a real good start. And Friday is the first football game here at home against Mason. Like we were talking about before, we're expecting Coach Will Hyde to be at least nine and one again. Put a little pressure on him. Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Regano?
Yeah. You know, at the last board meeting, I read this statement. And it was about the AP Government Textbook that we adopted and the related AP Government History and AP Government Frameworks. I read the statement. "The lessons in this book and the entire AP Government and AP History Frameworks are not about true American history and traditional American values. They aren't about freedom and inalienable rights, but instead portray our founders as economically self-interested wealthy white property owners. The Civil War wasn't about freeing slaves or preserving the Union, but about economic competition between the industrial North and the plantation South. The settling of the West was not an epic saga of hardships endured to create a civilization in the wilderness, but genocide of the Indians whose lands and resources were stolen to serve capitalist exploitation. Inherent in this sort of history is identity politics, dividing the haves and have-nots and assigning victims and their oppressors under the camouflage of ideals and principles. When a book is void of the basic facts of history, the vacuum is filled with melodramas of victimization, racism, oppression and violence that cast the United States as the villain guilty of crimes against humanity. This philosophy is used to manufacture guilt, to justify domestic and foreign policies, to surrender American sovereignty to international organizations and justify the taking and redistribution of wealth by the federal government. These national frameworks, tests and the books aimed at them are pushing a progressive agenda. The result is, unless a classroom teacher corrects these problems, students are robbed of their true heritage and duped into abandoning the historical uniqueness of America and the principles that have made our country the most free and prosperous country to ever exist. We need to find books that help teachers focus on historical accuracy and not ones aimed at scoring well on tests aligned to progressive frameworks." I read that statement at the last meeting and at the time I asked to have that included with the minutes, there was no objection at the time. And at the same time, there is a statement included from staff that is their subjective evaluation of the book. I don't understand what the controversy is about including this statement. I think it's just a common courtesy to an elected official to include that kind of a statement in the record of the minutes. So therefore, Dr. Malone, what I would like to do is move that we reconsider item one point three and that we include in those minutes this statement that I just read.
Okay. All right.
What comment, what may I ask from the staff was included?
I did not add any comment in the actual physical minutes.
There is an addendum in the minutes.
The only thing that would be included in the minutes was the evaluation of the actual book. That had nothing to do with the motion or what was said during the motion. It would have been what was brought to the board as part of the evaluation process to approve what they had gone through before bringing the book.
So from Andrew Anten, that supports district policy? That's what's up?
Yeah, and I mean, I can look at the.
Okay.
No, it's their opinion about the book. And if staff's allowed to put an opinion in the minutes, I don't understand why an elected official can't have an opinion in the minutes as well. So I made, I made a motion, Dr. Malone.
Yes, you have. There is a motion. Is there a second? There is no second. So the motion dies. Question, Mr. Regano, did you write that or is that, was someone else the author of the statement you read?
Dr. Malone? I think that's a rather insulting question.
It's not meant to be insulting, I'm simply saying that you are portraying it as your comment. And I'm simply asking if it is your comment or if you are.
Dr. Malone, that's a rather insulting question.
I'll take that as a no then.
Take it however you wish, it's a rather insulting question.
Okay, all right. Well, I just simply asked the question. Okay, thank you. At this point then, if there are no other board member comments, comments from the public at large? Okay. Then we're ready for a break before we have executive session, please? We'll have a five-minute break before we have our executive session. Thank you.
Can you redo everything with executive session there?
Can I what?
Read what we're talking about.
I can if I can find it. All right. So we are going into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of a public employee or official, matters to be kept confidential by federal law or regulations or state statutes. So is there a, first of all, a motion to end with executive session?
Yes.
All right.
So.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Let me just do roll call, okay? Regano, I'll go ahead and take roll call, Regano.
Sure.
Malone?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Yes.